Please show me in face, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, fair and good, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Should I make a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
Your second.
Second.
Someone mentioned, may I want to amend the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss opening up this room back to the public.
Your second.
Discussion, yeah.
Any discussion?
I want to hear his opinion.
All favor.
Medical field.
I mean, our numbers are down.
Yes.
You know, I think if a person wants the vaccine, they have the chance to get the vaccine.
Okay.
If our numbers would go back up into the hundreds like they were, I would recommend closing the meetings. But they are down.
Good.
And, you know, if a person feels safe enough to come, they can come. They can wear masks or they not. They don't have to. It's up to them.
Okay.
So, I hear a motion to open the meetings back up to public.
I'll make a motion to open up the Bourbon County Commission meetings back up to the general public.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Susan, we're into the budget hearing, so I'm going to...
Budget hearing or the revenue?
Oh, I mean, I'm sorry, revenue neutral.
It says 2022 budget hearing.
You need to adjust your...
It's supposed to be the budget hearing. Are we going to prove the budget today, too?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, when you get through the revenue neutral, then we'll open up.
So, you have four cemeteries boards that are required to have revenue neutral rate hearings as well. And so, they are on standby if anybody has any questions for their proposals. There's also, they've already adopted some resolutions, and so I would think that you guys need to formally adopt their resolutions, if Ashley can find them. Okay, perfect. So, she has the resolutions. For, the first one would be the Barnesville Cemetery, so you need to open up the revenue neutral rate hearing. We're going to have to do four hearings to do it properly.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add some revenue neutral rate hearings for the, for four different cemetery board, cemetery boards.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And they have been invited.
Yes, they have been invited. For the Barnesville Cemetery, they're going from 2.238 to 2.708. And so, that's all I can give you as far as what I know. So, I'll open it up for questions.
What's their revenue neutral rate?
Their revenue neutral rate is 2.238, and they're going to 2.708. So, they are definitely raising.
These are all five minutes apiece.
Yep.
Get out the timer.
Good morning. I would just like to offer my same explanation that I gave last time, that we had a revenue neutral hearing, that it's nothing more than an exercise to raise taxes. Because it's not that we're going to remain revenue neutral, it's that we're not going to remain revenue neutral. And we are going to collect a dollar more than we did in the previous year. Likewise with the county, that we're going to collect $42,000 more than we did last year. So, it's a not revenue neutral hearing. Right?
Well, they call it a revenue neutral hearing. We can't change the name.
We're not talking about the county right now anyway.
Well, we're talking about Barnesville. Now, they're...
But, I mean, we can't, we can't, we can't...
They are raising.
Right, they are, but we can't change the name of it.
No.
I mean, it's what it's called. It's called what it's called.
I'm only offering a clarification of what it is that we're allowing to happen. By having a revenue neutral hearing, we're allowing taxes to go up.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's very well.
And if we want to, if you wanted to raise them even more, you could.
No, they can't go beyond...
Beyond the budget authorization.
They cannot go beyond the mill levy that they're requesting.
Okay. But that then becomes a matter of valuation versus the mill levy. Right?
It's whatever, if the valuation comes in higher, they can only levy at the amount that they set, period.
Dollar amount.
No.
Levy amount.
No, the dollar amount that they are requesting.
That's what I'm just asking you. And you're saying no, but you really want to say...
They will generate what they need to, whatever property tax they need to generate is what will be...
So, it could go up even more than $42,000.
Go up here, go down.
No, $42,000?
Well, I mean, I'm talking, I'm not talking...
I'm sorry, I'm confusing Barnesville with, you never gave us the dollar amounts for the Barnesville Cemetery, just the levy amount.
It's one of the things we do every year.
I'm sorry?
One of the things we ever do every year, I get, I get some, some forms that I have to sign almost every meeting, that, that either collects more taxes or refunds taxes.
I understand that.
So, that's, that's kind of, our budget's based on the mill.
But we're, we're missing out on what the valuable part of the Senate Bill 13 really was all about, and that the valuation cannot go up just based on your normal repairs, and if you put up a fence, your valuation cannot be arbitrarily increased because you put up or repaid, painted your house, let's say, and it looks better.
So, in the past, what do we do?
You built a fence, you raised the tax.
And every year, we, we sent, we set our mill levy, and we actually stated in our budget hearings that we were raising the mill levy based on the increase in the assessed valuations.
Right. But the Senate Bill 13 does control the...
No, it don't.
Yes, it does.
No, no, what does, is make you have a hearing, and, and next year, we'll be sending out letters to everyone, every property owner in the state of Kansas, if they go over the revenue neutral rate. That's all it does.
Now, I'll, I'll beg to differ with you, but I'll show you the Senate Bill 13. But I didn't bring a copy of it today, because I didn't know we were going to talk about anything other than the open meeting for the county budget. But, thank you.
Just so, for clarification, Barnesville, last year, they levied $2,873, and this year, they are levying $3,119.
So, $300.
Yeah.
You know, one thing about cemetery districts, it's very hard to get people to be on those boards.
Yeah.
Extremely difficult.
But I drive by the Barnesville Cemetery, and it looks very nice.
Well, I'm sure it does. And, you know, one of the things we try to do at the county, when they ask for some help, we're able to give it to them.
Okay, so you can close that hearing, and then you'll need to adopt the resolution if there's no one else to talk on behalf of it.
I make a motion to close the Barnesville budget hearing for revenue neutral.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Ashley, do you happen to have their resolution number? Okay, so we'll need to probably apply one of our own. So, just need to make a motion to pass the resolution.
We need a, need a resolution.
Mm-hmm. Can you create one? Like a number?
We have to read the whole thing.
You have to read the whole thing. Can you pull, can you pull the one from the county's last meeting?
Welcome to the minutia.
And I'll, I'll...
Is there a terrorist attack?
I couldn't tell you. Maybe it's because I'm here right now.
You're that, I think you're that popular.
Keep you in control.
I assume David came in the door to go upstairs, but...
Morning, Ann.
Good morning.
I always keep my bail number written on my hand, so I know if you call.
So, you're good to go.
Because I don't know anybody's phone number anymore.
Robert's number and speed dial.
Let's go ahead and do the, the rest of them will do all the ones at one time. Does that sound good while she's pulling that?
Work for me. Who's next?
Okay, so the next one, you'll need to open a revenue neutral rate hearing for Glendale Cemetery.
Make a motion to open the revenue neutral hearing for Glendale Cemetery.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Their revenue neutral rate is 2.261, and the proposed tax rate is 3.150. And that's...
So, it's $900.
Yeah, let me look and see. Last year, they levied for $2,442. This year, they will levy $2,780.
So, around $300.
What was the new number on the rate? What's the new?
2.1?
3.150.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. You can have, you can close this one if there's no comments.
No, you got five minutes.
No?
You're in the minute one.
Well, we said we would start them at 9:05 and 9:10. So, it's whatever you want to do.
Well, I just put it on, on the timer.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry.
That's all right. You do however, however you want.
Well, I'm just going by the rules.
Makes it a little easier, doesn't it? Makes it a little easier, doesn't it?
We are.
No, I'm saying where is Glendale? I'm just curious.
Oh, Glendale, it's in Arizona.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I know where that one is. Been there, done that, but I don't know if they have a cemetery there.
Well, Glendale, I bet it does. Probably a pretty big one.
I don't know. How many cemeteries are in the city of San Francisco?
Oh, probably zero.
Yep, exactly. They moved everybody to across the bridge with the fire. 32. North Bourbon County. I think it's Xavier.
Two, hang on, 235th and Wagon, or 245th and Wagon.
I think you're about the first time.
235th and Wagon.
Right. Talking about the, the bridge.
Barnesville.
Oh, Barnesville, my goodness. Yeah, that's way up there.
Yep.
Grab your pen.
Where the, my cousin lives out there.
Yep, not very far. You can see it.
You can see it from their house.
Yeah.
In five minutes, Lynn.
Yeah, three.
Three.
Like watching a pop order.
Yeah, you're right.
Somebody else can keep the time on the next one. Maybe it'll go faster.
Oh, you're doing fine. You're doing fine.
No, but this is perfect. Thank you.
You know, you could modify the attention to allow, since we're not here, to allow less time.
You could. If there's nobody here to talk on behalf of any of them.
Glendale's on Tomahawk, but I can't get the, the...
We can make the reason because we have no, no one here.
Yeah, it's on Tomahawk.
Maybe you ought to ask if there's anybody here to talk on any of these.
Okay, I entertain a motion to close the revenue neutral rate.
Make a motion to close the revenue neutral rate for Glendale Cemetery.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to make a motion? Short the time.
Can we do that? I'm okay with it.
Yeah, as long as you, I would ask if there's anybody to speak on any of these.
Can we publish five minutes?
We publish five minutes.
Okay, well, next.
Next.
Okay, Lath Branch Cemetery, need to open the revenue neutral rate hearing.
Last.
Lath?
Lath. I make a motion to open a revenue neutral hearing for Lath Branch Cemetery.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Their revenue neutral rate is .954. The proposed tax rate is 1.019. They levied $2,557 last year. They're levying $2,755 this year.
Aye.
I did. Yes, it was a good game. I know. They played well. Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think they'll...
Changes the play. So, states are changing here.
Yeah, yeah, they'll do well. Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah. I had a city meeting, so I didn't...
They're all halftime, but... You want to? Okay. Ladder check, we get ladder checked. You need to, so, the old one, and we'll get the new one coming in.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're saying so.
Did I go mail once a year to check up for my family?
Oh, you're a lucky dog.
Very lucky, well, bless my God. They took me to surgery, and I'm like, "Now, did we got a problem?" The cancer was gone. I believe that. Anyway, I got an email from them this morning that, "Don't forget it, your immune system's terrible. Be careful." Thank you. I appreciate the message, but it did make my breakfast a better.
My bad.
I've seen three miracles in my lifetime.
Hey, I entertain a motion to close the revenue neutral hearing.
Make a motion to close the revenue neutral rate hearing for Lath Branch Cemetery.
Your second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Last one is the Rosedale Cemetery. Need to open the hearing for that.
Make a motion to open the revenue neutral hearing for Rosedale Cemetery.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The revenue neutral rate for Rosedale Cemetery is .982. The proposed tax rate is 1.443, which is, let's see. Well, their numbers don't make sense. Hang on a second. And their numbers don't make sense, because last year was 5,548, so they must have had a cash carryover. Let me add up their numbers real quick. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just not making sense with what they're levying versus last year, what they levied.
So, did, see, the grandson made the varsity team. He's a freshman this year.
Wow, that's a big deal. He's a big kid, though.
Well, he is. He also got recognized as, by the livestock, one of the special teams.
That's great. Good player.
Six, six-one, and I think like 230.
Wow, big kid.
Tall, skinny, weighs about size 14.
I know, I've got one of them in the family, so, big.
Well, my granddaughter is in volleyball this year, and she stands just a tussle over six foot. And she's, she's a seventh grader.
Make her a middle hitter.
Yeah. Put on that sheet to hand out the games.
He's 2'8". You got to make him look...
Well, yeah, they must do that on purpose, because of the competition.
Yeah, yeah.
He is sixth grader.
Yeah, wow.
I guess she's an eighth grader this year. She was six foot last year, a little, little less than that match. She grows like weed. Huh?
She ought to do real well in volleyball.
Oh, she does. She knows it's her first year.
Yeah.
But she does. Man, I was watching her, her last game, and she got some power behind it. I want to make a motion to close the hearing, revenue neutral hearing rate, or hearing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the revenue neutral rate hearing for the Rosedale Cemetery.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Four resolutions.
They all say the same thing, just different numbers.
So, this is resolutions, and they all say the same thing. And they're for Barnesville, Glendale Cemetery, Lath Branch Cemetery. And did I, and did we get this here? Rosedale Cemetery. So, and its reservation number, I'll read one of them, and then I'll read off the reservation numbers. Resolution of the Barnesville Cemetery, the Glendale Cemetery, the Lath Branch Cemetery, and the Rosedale Cemetery. Kansas delivered a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate, whereas the revenue neutral rate for Barnesville Cemetery was calculated as 2.238 mils by Bourbon County Clerk Ken, whereas the budget proposed for governing body of the Barnesville Cemetery will require levy of property tax rating exceeding revenue neutral rate, and whereas the governing body held a hearing on 9/14/21, allowing all interested taxpayers to be heard and opportunity to give oral testimony, and whereas the governing body of Barnesville Cemetery, having heard testimony, still finds it necessary to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the governing body of Barnesville Cemetery. The Barnesville Cemetery shall levy the property tax rate exceeding revenue neutral rate of 2.708 mils. Revenue neutral rate was 2.238, and the proposed tax, proposed tax rate of 2.708. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon adoption, and shall remain in effect for further action taken by the governor, by the governing body, adopted this day, 9/14/2021, signed by the governing body and have a signature. This is revenue, resolution number one. This is revenue, resolution number one, two oh two one. There's a motion to adopt this resolution.
Yeah, make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution one.
Second?
Two.
Two oh two one, oh one, two oh, two one. Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, this is for the, uh, Glendale Cemetery. They are, their revenue neutral rate is two point two six one. Estimated revenue neutral rate will be three, uh, three point one five oh. And the resolution takes effect immediately. Force's adoption shall remain effective until further action by the governing body adopted this day, the fourteenth day of, of June, or September, two thousand twenty-one. All right. This is resolution number one dash twenty-one.
Make a motion to adopt resolution one dash twenty-one.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is for the Brant Cemetery. Uh, their revenue rate is point nine five four mils. Estimated mill levy, uh, is one point oh nine. The resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon adoption and shall remain in effect till further action taken by the governing body. And again, this is now the resolution number oh one twenty-one for the Brant, the Lath Brant Cemetery.
Make a, make a motion to adopt resolution zero one twenty-one.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, this is for the Rosedale Cemetery. The revenue neutral rate is point nine eight two and the proposed mill rate is one point four four three. Resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its adoption. Shall remain effective till further action taken by the, uh, governing body on this fourteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-one. Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution number oh one twenty-one for Rosedale Cemetery?
I already did oh one twenty-one.
It's the same because there are different cemeteries that can have the same resolution.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution oh one twenty-one.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Need, um, to open the budget hearing for, uh, the Bourbon County budget.
Make a motion to open the budget hearing for the Bourbon, two thousand twenty-two budget hearing for Bourbon County.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. For how long is this? Fifteen minutes?
Doesn't have to be fifteen minutes.
Okay, so five minutes?
It just had to be done by nine twenty, so we're, we're well within our, our timeframe. Um, some of the things that I want to point out for this year is, uh, last year we levied sixty-four point nine three one. This, this year we are levying sixty-two point five zero zero. Your revenue neutral rate is sixty-two point one three zero. And the amount of property tax that you levied for last year was, um, seven million, one hundred seventy-one thousand and seven hundred dollars.
Or did I figure it right again one more time?
Seven million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
This year, the amount of property tax that you are levying for is seven million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, which is forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars less than what you levied for last year. So, and that is because you were able to capture just a little bit because your assessed valuation went up. So, um...
And the assessed valuation went up, how much do you remember?
The assessed value. So last year the assessed valuation was a hundred and ten million, this year it's a hundred and fourteen million. So, but again, you are, you cut the amount of property tax that you're levying for forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
But we're still over the revenue neutral.
You're still over the revenue neutral rate.
Because we captured a little bit.
Yep. Yep, so.
On the top of it.
Then you have to open it up for public comments.
And that was quite a challenge to get to that point.
Yeah, it was.
Public comments?
Yeah, uh, is it on? Just can't, anyway.
Red light?
It's hard, yeah, it's hard to know back there that anything is on. Um, so yeah, I just, first question. So what is the, my name is Ann Dara, I live in Fort Scott. So what is the combined total for the cemeteries?
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, not that, that it was raised.
I don't know, we'd have to go back and recalculate the cemeteries.
Around four thousand dollars roughly, maybe? Not even that much.
No, it's only about eleven hundred.
For all of the cemeteries we take care of?
About eleven hundred dollars.
Eleven hundred dollars?
For all of a cemetery, oh, that, okay, that's, I'm sorry, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, not very much.
No, no, it's not very much at all. Okay, I guess I expected more than that.
Their assessed valuation's really low.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's no electricity there and they're not even.
And not people walking around, so wait, at least we help. Uh, anyway, I just want to commend you guys for working really hard. Um, I've watched you guys in the city and just, uh, you know, agonize over some things and, and try and make some other things better and make it, um, more, um, I don't know, equal across the board. Um, but I would like a little bit of an education and, and I don't know if I can, uh, if you all can get it or not, on, um, our school districts and what, how, how, how do they get their money? Where does it come from? Does it, does it come through this assessed value, these, the seven million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand?
Oh, no.
No.
Two hundred and forty-two?
So, so Ann, there's, there's taxing districts in Bourbon County over and beyond the, uh, the county itself. You have school districts, you have cemetery districts, you have fire districts.
Yes.
That, that all, all have a, you have libraries.
Yes.
Uh, everyone of those are on independent taxing to the community college.
Okay.
So, so they're all independent and they, they derive their, their funds, uh, from property tax and whatever the state gives them and some federal funding too, my understanding.
Okay, so I need to go back because there is a website and I should have done that, but yeah, it didn't have, yeah. There is a pie chart and it talks about, and it, and it, and it weedles off all the, all the little sections of the school district and I think the county and FCC.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, FSCC and some others. And the city.
So you gotta, you also have to look at like the, where they're taxing. So for like the city of Fort Scott, we just tax within the city limits.
Yes.
And so then you have all of Bourbon County. And then for the school district, it actually has its own area that it also tax, taxes within. So it's, it's in the city and the county to capture their, to their assessed valuation.
At the one, the piece of paper you get in the mail that tells you what your taxes are to, and I do remember seeing that now, um, you know, from the school districts especially and, and, and all of that.
Well, you, you had to also look at all of the incorporated cities, all the townships.
And depending on where you live, it'll be different for every person, you know, depending on where you live.
Yes, yes, okay, so then, again, I think it's been said once. You and the city, the county and the city, you know, work hard to reduce as much as possible, but when our school districts go above their revenue neutral rate and also way above their budgets, as me sitting at home paying my taxes, I don't see much savings if, really, I mean.
Yeah, it's a wash.
I know that's a very simple way to say that.
It's like a wash.
But yeah, it's like a wash.
If they go up two mils, then, and we go down two mils, it's a, it's a wash.
And when you get your tax statement.
Yeah.
It is broken down by entity.
Yes, 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 yeah, I, yeah. So anyway, out there in YouTube world, you need to go to the school board meeting on September twentieth at noon at the Board of Education office, so, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Because there's actually a law that says if you have two school districts and a county with a population of less than twenty-five thousand, you should combine those school districts.
Well, you'd have an awful lot of small counties that have a lot of different.
Just telling you, I've read it and I'll be happy to show it to you. So we're still up for comments on the county.
Yeah.
This, I'm gonna make a comment, it's not directed to any one individual, but how can we comment? We didn't have, we were locked out of here for a month and a half. And at home, when Susan says refer to tab twelve, we don't have tab twelve. Last year, I know, sitting over here, we got documents every time we had a work session. I got to see all the departments, how those flowed through and where they are. We didn't see a thing.
I think Susan, I think also on that mic, I don't want to interrupt, but I think Susan made the offer that, that that information was available to the public. Did you, is that true?
I don't, I don't recall that.
That's true, I thought it was.
Then I'm gonna give you my personal experience, both here and at the city. I asked for the information that if I cared enough to come to these hearings, I should care enough, you should care enough to provide me so I could follow along with the discussion. That happened once or twice. Last time I didn't get anything.
That's not true. You, I actually handed it to you.
We're here to talk about the budget, not, okay? So, well, okay, I'll give you another example. Now I'm gonna give Chairman O'Hara credit. Last time in, in the, uh, regular meeting closed, the number was wrong on one page and you pulled it out and the correction was, well, but I got it right on the second page. I don't even know what number that was. We, we learned that, and I say no confidence because the two individuals that were brave enough to throw their hat in for the county clerk's job didn't even know that their salary was going down. That was sad to take place, to, to witness that.
So are you saying that we're concerned with COVID, just shut the meetings down for a month? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is we were, did not, I did not get an offer to get any documents to.
I have a question, sir. Is your comment said if we're as commissioners concerned with the COVID outbreak numbers and we're really concerned how many people's in this room, should we discontinue the commission meetings for a month?
No.
Or close the door?
No, but I should be able to come in here and sit at the desk and say that the budget documents are available for public inspection at the clerk's office.
I'm pretty, I, I mean, I, I'm in that, without going back, obviously don't want to do it right now, but I'm pretty sure that offer was made, I mean, like Lynn just said.
To come to the clerk's office and get documents if you want to see them?
Paperwork would be available.
I, I, I'll stay corrected, but I don't.
The notice of budget hearing says where detailed budget information is available in the county clerk's office, so.
Oh, so if you have those documents, you'd know that it existed that often.
It's published in the paper.
Published in the paper.
Yeah, last Saturday.
I don't really like it, but.
Okay. Second thing that was brought up last meeting, that we have, uh, some discrepancies of concern with the auditor and they were going to meet individually with you.
This has nothing to do with the budget.
Actually, I have a budget here.
So, I mean, I'm just gonna say there's public comments at the end, Michael.
Oh, no, no, this is all about the budget. This is all about the budget.
The audit?
Not about this year's budget.
The audit doesn't have anything to do with the budget.
Is the audit, you know, we had elected officials coming in and wanting to know what the results of that were, so how could we have a budget for next year when we don't even have confidence in the last year?
I was provided preliminary numbers to, um, to complete the budget.
And we are still waiting for, for the documentation from our, uh, from Terry's source.
Okay, and how about this IRS audit? Any impact to the budget?
I don't know any.
Not, not that we know of, or we don't know what that is yet.
I don't, that's a day-to-day challenge.
I'm sure, but I'm just bringing it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. There's a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the Bourbon County, twenty twenty-two budget hearing.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a resolution?
I don't think we have a resolution. Ashley, did she create a resolution before you left?
We have till the twentieth to approve it?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Okay, I'll get one created for you.
I've had a, I've had a real short break.
Yep.
Works for me. Works for me. Mr. Manning.
I guess I'll stay.
You can sit here. Get a chair if you don't like.
No, I'll stay one sec.
Yeah.
Okay. Real quick, Bob said he's gotta get to going here. We were doing some spraying for him the other day, and looking through their vehicles, we're short on some vehicles getting our mower guys to and from, and greeter guys to and from without using work trucks. They have a van out there at a sheriff's department that they would donate to us for us to be able to use to get our employees to and from, so that's.
Yeah, it's a 2009 white van that we had. It's the van that, in my capital outlay this year, I got to replace.
Right.
So it's sitting there. I mean, it runs and drives. It's got close to 200,000 miles on it. I think it'd be perfect for Eric. I talked to the sheriff. He said absolutely anything that we can do to help out another public entity, you know, let's give it to them. So we're here today to get approval from you guys to give him the van. The only stipulation, and I talked to Eric, is that the guys out there'd have to use a heat gun and take our stars off of the, cause it is a marked vehicle. It doesn't have no lights or nothing in it. It just saves everybody a bunch of.
It could be fun for him for a while.
Yeah, it could, but it's sure saves some headaches to go to Eric's phone calls to get those taken off. So I, I would appreciate if you guys would entertain the op, the notion to give it to him.
I don't think we even need a motion. I think we can just do it because it's county property.
There you go. You're on the bench.
There you go.
Easy enough. All right. We have some, yep, yep, sorry.
You'll have to go back in K Camp.
Okay.
Have the vehicle taken out. I put back on yesterday. I took it off the K Camp because under the law enforcement side of it. And sitting here just thinking about it, when he handed you the keys, I believe it's titled, we'll have to look at the clerk's office.
Okay.
To find out how it's titled under the sheriff's office, or if it's titled under the county. So that will probably will have to be switched. If there's a cost or anything on that, we can just probably gift it over.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Permits. Have one for Roman Shetler Jr. Once we got up and, and started digging, we found that there was one already that existed. So it turned out to be a replacement. I'm not for sure. We signed it to start off with. Not for sure how we do on the bottom, or whether we just let it go. I wrote replacement.
Boy, you just tear it up.
Gotcha. Roman Shetler Sr. has been replaced. And I forget the address on that one.
2025 195th.
There you go. And then Jeremy Booty had asked for an extension, and that one is completed, and you signed it last. So I'll send it, or you can send it on around.
1221 240.
Yeah. Okay. Kansas and 145th to the west. We talked a couple meetings, three ago, somewhere in there, on a school bus stop ahead sign. Visited with the school district out there, and there's no school bus stop at this time in that area. So I would like to ask for permission to remove that sign.
Sure.
Okay. I didn't know if I needed a motion on that, or whether we can just remove them, or how that works.
I'll make a motion. Keep it clean. What's the location?
It's Kansas and 145th to the west.
Okay. I make a motion to remove the bus stop ahead at the location of Kansas and 145th to the west.
Okay. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got a letter from the state this past week for the landfill. We are now in compliance with the berms being around the, I don't know if you guys have a look at. No, we don't have to sign anything on that. I'm just letting you know.
That's good. Thank you.
And then the, as far as the beans go, we're still out of compliance there, but we have until August of 2022 to have those composted. Half of them have to be composted by April 1st. Had a meeting with John George with Ag Engineering last week, and he is working to get our permit and everything for us so we can start our composting and start receiving beans back out at the landfill. So that's where we are with that.
So we are, we will be able to receive beans?
Yes.
At that time?
Once we have a permit in hand, so.
And we've not been able to take them for, since they told us we were out of compliance?
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay. Our biennial bridge inspection time for our bridges. Schwab Eaton has given us a proposal for 139 bridges. We have two fracture critical, and they also gave us a proposal to do our 30 low water structures that I believe they may have done them before for us, but it's been quite a while back. My recommendation would be that we have this done. There's a place there for you guys to sign if we want to move forward with that. Total cost would be $20,951. But we don't have a choice on the, KDOT requires us to do the.
And this is for next year?
Right. We have some that are due January. We have some that are due February. We have some that are due in March. And so they just gave us a proposal to come in and, and do them all, and that way we're done.
Come out of next year's budget or this year's?
Probably a little bit of both. We're trying to get our good budget numbers for us so we can look at it and see exactly where we need to take them out at, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the biennial update on the bridge inspection from Schwab Eaton, the Public Works Department. 139 bridges.
Mm-hmm.
Two fracture critical.
It's all on the back there, on that back page. The next one goes.
30 low water crossings.
Yes.
Terry, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right. Yep, they have to sign it as well. 235th between Pocwur and Quail. We had a concrete top, hand-rocked, laid box culvert giveaway last week. So that was Thursday afternoon. We replaced it Friday, and then we asphalted it yesterday and opened the road back up last night. So it is now back open. So that one's taken care of. 125th and Wagon. Had some paperwork given to me last week on the bridge. It needed to be, the northern three foot of it needed to be closed until repairs were made. This kinda, someone, the concrete guard rail, kinda gives you the pictures of what it was, but the concrete guard rail was knocked over, I don't know, several years ago, maybe. I'm not sure when. But anyhow, the, when that was done, it bent one of the supports underneath, and caused quite a little bit of damage on it. So went ahead and closed that three feet down of the bridge. You're still able to get a car or truck across, but heavy equipment or farm machinery, you're not gonna be able to get, get through there without removing the barricades, which I hope no one removes the barricades. So anyhow.
So it, it's been closed on that section then?
Pardon. It has been closed on that last three foot of that section. So also.
I got a, I got a call on it.
Right, right. Also, the report I, I was handed last week stated that we need to have an engineer on site when we do the work. So I have an engineer with Ag Engineering, Frank Young, will be there next Wednesday, and we will start repairing the bridge and getting it back up and going. So that gives you an update on that. I'll keep you updated as we go. The Mack truck that you approved for us to go look at, and if we saw fit to purchase, to purchase, it was in Fort Worth. Premium Truck Group took it upon himself to help us out and get the truck to Joplin so we didn't have to drive to Fort Worth. Anyhow, the truck is here today in Joplin, so we'll be either going down late this afternoon or tomorrow to look at the truck. And provided the motor's not knocking and the transmission doesn't have some big problem, we'll purchase the truck and, and move forward. But I wanted to let you know, we did not go to Fort Worth. We held out for them to bring it to Joplin, and we'll go to Joplin and look at it. So that's where that is. Windmills, there's four built in Bourbon County, seven in Crawford County. They ran into Mother Nature last week with the wind. It was too dangerous for their safety protocol, so they shut down, was not able to use the big, the top crane, I believe is what they call. So anyhow, they're scheduled to start back up today, weather permitting, and move forward with that. Of the 70 sites in Bourbon and Crawford County, they are completed with their excavation. The rebar's been installed, and the concrete has been poured for all of the, the sites. And they will be tearing down the concrete plant here in the very near future. So just giving you an update on that.
There you go. I don't know what else to call it. The tower?
Right.
How many pieces that come in?
Three.
Three?
Yep.
For long.
And then there's a part or piece that goes on the top, and I forget the word for it, and then the. There you go.
Thank you.
The word I wish I didn't know.
Yes. So anyhow.
Just curious.
Yep, yep.
I did, last trip I made was late last week, and I did see the, the ones that were up.
Yep. Anything for me?
Well, I know that last rain, we, we got, took a lot of gravel off the road again.
Yep.
And I know you've been working very hard to get, get that taken care of.
Right.
Last week, they were spotting all bad places, so.
Right.
I know it's time consuming.
Yep. We have been hit very hard this year with, with rain events, so.
According, according to Mr. Meeks, from some of his friends, is that this is gonna be our normal pattern from now on.
Boy, I hope not. That's.
It has been for several years.
Yeah.
It has. This is our third year.
Yep. Yes. Yep. So anyhow, any other questions or things I need to? You had asked about the crack sealing.
Yes.
I have a call into ProSeal waiting to hear back from them. That's who done the work for the city of Fort Scott, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm curious. I like your idea of doing it yourself.
Right. But I don't know if we can get to it or not, so let's get a price and see what it's gonna cost, and then we'll make that decision once we get the price.
Thank you.
Yep.
So where we are in asphalt, close?
Asphalt.
In the south?
Good Lord willing, we will be out of there this week and headed to 125th, but they tell me now we got rain coming tonight, so.
Hurricanes coming in, so.
But we're gonna work late tonight, and I know as of yesterday, we have 1.8 miles left.
You might got it whooped then.
And then we will be moving to 125th. It has been a long, drawn-out process, and we've had everything from equipment issues to weather, to rock issues. But anyhow, we are moving forward with it, and we will be moving to 125th next.
125th. Are you overlaying that or turning to gravel?
125th, we're, come on now. Come on now.
I just joked.
You're killing me.
Made everybody laugh.
There you go. Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. So anyhow.
That's it?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The issue with CIC, we'll have to pin that to next commission meeting. We've, our IT person's left some messages and has not had those phone calls returned. So to verify some things that Commissioner Beth wanted, we'll have to wait till next meeting. So I'd asked that that be tabled till the next commission meeting.
Okay.
And then I'd asked that we amend the agenda for David Neville's executive session to go at the end of the commission meeting. I can go during my time. I know David's busy, but we've got a lot of people in the room, and we would kinda wanna get those people heard, so.
I'll make a motion to move Mr. Neville's executive session to right after Jim Harris' between Jim and County Councilor Meeks.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The motion, table what? CIC?
Yeah, I'll just have, just have, I should put it on the agenda for next week. Robert?
How are you guys?
Morning.
Robert, you're supposed to wear those, not carry them around.
Well, we're gonna visit about that real quick. Some of the bill bonds in the street. You guys, you guys know what bill bondsmen's do?
Yeah.
We just post bonds, right?
Well, yeah.
My job is to make sure that victims have their day in court with the, with the defendant, that that defendant just doesn't run. In Bourbon County locally, Mr. Martin can control what's, what's in the county, but what happens when they leave, the court still has that bondsman accountable, no matter where they are. I gotta find him. If I don't find him, there's a, a big financial aspect for me. So when I put on that frac vest, which I have to do sometimes, you know, we don't wear it every day, and sometimes recovering somebody is just about making some phone calls. Sometimes, especially in other counties, one of my two bill bonds companies will choose to write some riskier bonds, and those can get a little bit dangerous. When I put on that frac vest, I put it on because I've gotta go save myself thousands of dollars, thousands. I'm not putting that vest on for $15 an hour. I'm putting it on for a lot of money, and whether I want to do it or not, I'll tell you. When I first got into the bill bonds business, I hadn't done anything in corrections, so I had no idea what kinda people were coming through the jail. And maybe those ones, hey, this one runs. He's not gonna go to his last court date. I wasn't privy to that. I knew some people in the community. Now I know, five years later. First, first three years, I wore that vest a lot, and met a lot of people souped up on methamphetamines that wanted to fight because, nothing personal, they just didn't wanna go to court. They wanna stay home with their family, continue to have fun, enjoy the illegal crap that they were doing. And so you have to learn to not take that personal. Someone swing at you, try to, I've been trying. Can't tell you how many times I've tried to be stabbed. Bourbon County has had some pretty, pretty, pretty bad people. And so not that the police department's not, but the sheriff's department's obviously a big line of defense for us, even related to political issues. I don't know that I'm a fan of Governor Kelly as, I would hope that a lot of citizens in Kansas are not. When I heard some different topics come up, the first thing I wondered is where, where's my sheriff, my sheriff standing on this? Is he gonna stand by some of this liberal BS? And an answer that was good. So recently, I went to a CEU class. I'm required, all bill bondsmen are required to go to this eight-hour CEU class, and usually we hear the same old thing. And it's stuff I do have an interest to hear, and I drive three hours to be able to hear it, if I have to go to Wichita or somewhere else, and three hours home. But they had some pretty good information, some astounding information. Two-thirds of all felonies in the state of Kansas are drug-related. And that's pretty scary. This report I'm holding, you guys can print it off yourselves. It's a KBI report about crime in Kansas, and it is through the roof right now. Naturally, that probably affects just right here in Bourbon County. Someone make my nose red. I come in and I, I support those guys. Someone make my nose red, I come in and I support those guys out there. I did a little research, and if you look up Taco Bell salaries, there are some Taco Bell employees that are making those salaries out there. The world's changing. You know, we float back five years or 10 years and see how inflation's coming up, and the world's changing, and all of a sudden, these wages aren't so high. Apparently, our county's behind. And when it first got me involved in this, want to come speak, is I've gotten to know some of these deputies. I myself am not always at accident scenes so often where maybe they're at, because I have a lot of guys that drive for me, and I work on a lot of trucks, and I do a lot of the things. But in bond recovery, I've met them. I have to have some communication with them. Hey, this is who I'm looking for today, I have to be transparent. There are some laws about that. So I've got to meet some of these guys. Nelson Blythe, he's from your district, he's from your area. He's a farm boy, went and served our country. When he left Bourbon County as a sheriff's deputy, he didn't leave for a dollar, he only for a dollar fifty. These guys are leaving for three and four dollars an hour. I'm not even saying that I think that we need to offer this competitive wage. I mean, these guys would, would you drive somewhere else if you were a younger person in a different shoes? Would you drive an hour for a 50 cent raise, for a dollar raise? Probably not. My concern is back to the drug-related crimes. The sheriff's department's losing part of their drug task force each time in their intel, kind of like me. When I first got into the bill bonds industry, I had to learn. Well, now I kind of know what's going on more in the community than I did before, and it's devastating. It's very eye-opening. I encourage you all to go for a ride with them. Go for a ride with me, you can't, there's some laws against that. But you can go for some rides with them and see for yourself. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on that's past just somebody just picking up coffee and coming to work. There's a lot of stuff that's just not pretty in our county going on. From a real estate standpoint, Ben Cole and I were just talking, his house sold to some out-of-towners, and I track real estate closely, right? I want to make a little money in that if I can. And you're hearing realtors talk more and more about all of these people moving in from out of town. We're all hearing about it. Nobody's naive to this. But we've got to keep our crime rate down. We've got to keep our community clean. Otherwise, those people are going to move away. My mom and dad probably wouldn't have brought their three young kids here if they wouldn't have been able to forecast what Bourbon County would look like after the first three years we lived here. When I moved here, I had no idea what methamphetamines were, no clue. And it's rampant everywhere now, right? But southeast Kansas was really bad at the time we moved here. So a lot of guys come in here and they ask you for money every day. Hey, we need some money, we need some money. You guys hear it, right? I get it. One of the things that's occurred to me is to look at this jail thing again. I own a towing company, and I bought a new truck recently. I wanted to buy a truck that was worth, it was a much more expensive truck. But I run a business, and I bought what my business could afford. When the jail was built, y'all did what could be afforded, and there was a lot of argument, a lot of scrutiny about it, but that was the end. At the time, I think it was Rhonda Dunn, she stood up and said, hey, we don't have any more money, we get some control over this. Maybe now it's time to look at it again. I found an article, Governor Kelly, she asked legislation to release $16.4 million for 600 beds to be rented from somewhere else. Now, this has happened before, and she was doing it at $50 a bed per day. Well, if we had 16 cells at $75 per day, and these are all just numbers, and I'm not the professional here, I'm just wondering if you guys couldn't consider a research team? I would love to be on it. Mr. Hoyt and I had a short discussion, and I think he would like to be on it. Mark McCoy and I talked about it before he ended up on the city's payroll, so I don't know what his availability would be now, but you all have some people that would get involved and try to do a little independent research. I don't expect you to listen to Bobby Reed, Mr. Martin. I mean, they want that, so they have a reason to skew that, but what about an independent local group of people to research it? Just at a glimpse, at one time, I heard 375,000 before they closed up the building. We closed it up, went to 700,000. I don't know if it's a million, maybe it's a million five now. I don't know what it is. But I know at Governor Kelly's current numbers, it would pay $492,000 a year for us to take 16 inmates 365 days a year. You've got to feed them at 850 a day. It's roughly 50 grand you're going to send down the way. Even if it was a million and a half dollar deal, if we were investing in real estate and look for a four or five-year return on our money, if some of this research is right and some of these articles that Governor, about what Governor Kelly's doing, and the overpopulation of our local prisons, sounds like the county could make some money doing this. Maybe it's an answer to how we pay some of these guys. Y'all want to cut his budget, maybe that's a way? I don't know. All hypothetical, right? I'm just saying, would the county entertain letting a team do some research and present it to you about the viability?
We can't stop anybody from doing research.
No.
So I mean, you don't need our permission to do that. Me and Michael have had this conversation.
Can you give 100% support?
Yeah. Would you all want to do your? We'll give you your support, but we can't stop you from doing it. My, I could be devil's advocate, but I'll just.
Sure.
I would encourage you to do a study, bring it back to us.
But I mean, you have to include in that study, what if that fills up with 16 people from Bourbon County? Now, all of a sudden, it's costing the county more money.
Absolutely.
Right, you know, when we first started, and I know crime has increased, two things are going to happen. One of them is that when the city starts their court, it's going to stop some of the stuff going upstairs, which is going to make things a lot faster. The other one is, when we built this jail, we built it with the premises on the amount of valid beds. The add-on was going to be something over and beyond if we did have the money. And at that time, we was running 35 arrests in that, or 35 beds full in that jail. We were going to lease them out, and we haven't made a dent because things increased. The other part of that is, we went from 6.85 million on that project to 9.2 million, and we were out of money.
And no doubt, we can't beat that dead horse, right? We're here three years later, but now, maybe we should relook at this. Robert, I say that about filling that up with Bourbon County, because I hear rumors.
Sure.
And I don't know, they're strictly rumors, that that jail has people in there that really probably shouldn't be in there. Now, I know that's not Bill's problem or Bobby's problem, that's our county attorney or whoever. People that, you know, are they in there, would they be better served being out? I don't know those answers, but I'm just saying, if you bring me research, I would expect it to be not just.
Not one-sided, absolutely. And that crossed my mind, he absolutely could go over there and fill that jail up with all local people, not because he's targeting them, simply because we have an increased crime rate. But then I'll ask you the same question. Right now, he can hold, how many people? 74. Crime goes up right now, where are you putting those people? We're going to pay to put them somewhere else. So we still have the same avenue. Now, we're paying out. Honestly, as a citizen, I don't care whether we're paying, whether we're saving money or making money, as long as we're not paying out. So in any event, I don't know. You're right, all the research's got to be on the table. I ask about manpower. How many more men does it take to, if we have 16 more cells? I was told zero. I don't know if that's right or not, but apparently, the way the jail was designed, it's designed and structured in such a way where that it was supposed to be able to view all of these cells and all of these people with its current staffing. So probably a lot of research, but even if my numbers are right, those numbers, if they're half-right, it should entice you all to do a little research. But those kind of numbers, let's hire somebody to do some research. It seems like it would take no time at all, and we're guessing at numbers, because the last number was 700,000, so maybe it's 1.5 million now. Well, if we're going to potentially take in 400-some-odd thousand dollars, or we're going to save how many hundreds of thousands of dollars if we, if crime rate continues to go up and we don't have the beds for these people? It's the same to me. I don't know what it costs. Tell me what it costs, what's it cost to house an inmate out right now?
Usually, we're from 35 to 55.
Okay. Governor Kelly's paying 75, apparently, but when the numbers were 50, it was $292,000, fast math. Minus what it costs to feed those people, you're still, we're still talking about over a quarter million dollars per year. It seems like easy math if you're just an investor. If we're just talking about investing in a hill of beans, real estate, doesn't matter. The numbers seem awful viable without much research, so I'm just saying, maybe we aren't the only ones that need to do a little research. How about the county? It wasn't viable before you said that. We reached this threshold, time to stop, put this all on hold. Well, the jail's been up for a while, maybe it's time to look at it again, that's all I'm saying.
And again, crime rate did go up, you know, when we built this jail, and it was on the pretense, possibly, we could have a state contract with, fill up some of those extra beds that we had to fill it up in the wrong.
Sure. Well, that's what I had for you all. I hope that you all really get to listen to who gets to speak next. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Good morning, good morning.
Morning.
Apologize, my voice is a little hoarse, I'm going on about a 24-hour day. Like to start off by thanking you guys for the opportunity to come up here and talk to you, as well as the public. We'd like to come up here as a unit. You can see, we've got all our deputies here, minus a couple. Some had family commitments, couldn't make it. We were informed through Sheriff Martin that possibility of getting a 3% raise, I don't know if that's been set in stone.
That isn't a budget that will be approved, that gets back on the agenda with a resolution. It was approved this morning.
It was approved this morning? Okay. Like to start off and, you know, you guys may know this, maybe you don't. All these deputies here, we go out to Hutchison, Little Yoder, Kansas. We take, we become specialized employee, skilled labor, as Deputy Blythe put it. I like to steal some of his words. We graduate out there, we take an oath to protect and serve our community. Kids, the schools, the farmers, the city folks, everybody. And knowing that, nowhere in there does it say, being a police officer or deputy, you're going to get rich, because you're not. I can refer law enforcement to being like a football coach. Nobody coaches to get rich, okay? So I don't want anybody having the idea that we're up here trying to be greedy, or we're trying to put ourselves before our community, because that's not what we're trying to do. Five years ago, Sheriff Martin did a survey, and at that time, we were 20.6 below the minimum salary in like counties. Last time I was up here speaking, Mr. Beth brought up, hey, we can't compare ourselves to Lynn County, we can't compare ourselves to Allen County. I get it now. That was enlightening to me. So we go back to this survey five years ago. Now, granted, Mr. Beth, Mr. Harris, you guys weren't here five years ago. And so Sheriff Martin does another survey. And now you guys are enlightened to the fact that we're even farther back than we were. We're at 30%, 30% below the minimum pay for like counties. To me, I mean, that should be an eye-opening number. It should be an eye-opening number for our community, should be an eye-opening number for you guys. And, you know, it's kind of concerning, you know, that there's just not a lot of talk about it. And if we're going to get where we feel like we deserve to be, we're willing to come up here and fight for it. If that's what it takes, you know, if we're going to come up here and we have to, you know, dig and dig and dig, that's what's going to happen. Let's see, 46 cents is what that averages out to, if we did our math correct, okay? And that breaks down to $5.52 more each shift, because we work 12-hour shifts. Breaks down to $44.16 more a pay period, that's every two weeks. Breaks down to $1,148.16 more a year. You know, and every little bit helps. It does. You know, a 30% increase to get us to where the minimum pay for like counties would give us 11,000 more dollars a year. That's a big difference. To these guys right here, that's life-altering. If somebody wins $10,000, man, that's winning the lottery. I don't know what more you can compare. You know, somebody said, dude, you just got $10,000? I'm ecstatic. Now, granted, I know that doesn't happen in one year. I'd been with the sheriff's office going on eight years. I've seen one raise, one raise. My first three years of service in '14, '15, and '16, I got a pay cut almost to the total of $800, because my insurance went up $200. My insurance went up $200. My insurance went up $200, $300. I don't know anybody that stays at any job, whether it's nurse, a cop, the trash man, anybody, that's going to stay at a job where you're going to go in the hole three years in a row. I don't know anybody. I bet, I would challenge to say that none of you know somebody that does that. You do?
I do. EMTs.
EMTs?
You bet they do. They're working those $13 an hour, they're working 24-hour shifts, and yes, they, their health insurance goes up every year.
Absolutely.
I know that for a fact.
And I would challenge you to take that passion that I hear coming for EMTs, but it towards the deputies that served this county. And I'm not, I'm not trying to single you out, Mr. O'Hara, but there was some fire in your voice right there. I know them, EMTs.
If I knew anyone, I do know someone.
Yes.
I know a lot of people that are in that same situation.
Okay. And there was some, I mean, I was, I felt it. I felt like there was some, so you care about the EMS people?
I do, I care about all of our employees. You know, I care about everyone in our department. We have heavy equipment operators that are way below what they would pay in other companies. You know, we're behind everywhere, not just in one department.
Yeah. And then people need to come up here and fight like we're doing.
They have it.
Good. I'm happy for them. There's two deputies that work for this department, after they pay their insurance, their taxes, all their deductibles, one of these deputies makes $600 take home every two weeks. $600 take home. There's another one that makes $800. To put his life on the line, you can throw it out there and say, well, that's what you signed up for. No, nobody signs up to get shot. Nobody signs up not to make it home to their families. But ain't too many people that I know that would do this job for $600 every two weeks. And that shows to the heart and the effort that these guys put in to doing this. Because they miss out on birthdays. We don't get holidays, you know, like everybody else does. We don't get, you know, we miss out on family time. We miss out on birthdays, time with our children, family events. Why? Because we care about Bourbon County. We care about the issues. We care about helping everybody that's in this room, you, you, and you. Where we get a phone call, we're there for you guys. You know, and I'm sorry, but this department right here doesn't feel like we have your support. We don't. We don't feel it. We feel like there's a rift between the sheriff and at times, sometimes Mr. O'Hara. Sometimes, you know, I come in here, and not to be rude, when Mr. Martin comes up to speak, I see Mr. O'Hara get his phone up. Sometimes, you know, I come in here, and, and not to be rude, when Mr. Martin comes up to speak, I see Mr. O'Hara get his phone out just like this. I've seen Mr. Beth do it. I'm up here fighting for my livelihood and my family, and if this is more important than what I'm saying, I think that speaks volumes. Because I would say that I demand your attention fully.
I have a question.
Sure.
I admire what you gentlemen do, ladies and gentlemen, everyone's involved, but I'm also, I've asked this before, I agree with everything you're saying. I can't think of a Bourbon County employee, your department, Public Works Department, needs pay raises. But I also ask you to tell me the solution. You brought me a problem, tell me how to fix it.
Okay. I mean, you know, I don't have all them answers, but my part in this county is protecting and serving my community. Your part in this is figuring out those solutions. That's why you were elected, you were elected, and you were elected.
One of our choices, of course, maybe it's other choices, but one of them's raising taxes.
Nobody likes taxes, I get that. Go ahead.
This is our chance to figure that you might want to throw out there. Okay. Is this for, is this for, to that point?
And I'm not saying there's not other ways, but raising taxes is one way to generate more revenue for all departments.
Well, while she's looking at that information, I want to go ahead and, so there's no, here. Several months ago, there was a group of people that came up here, different brokers, different consultants to come and give you ideas, is what to do to save money. Okay? He had mentioned that he left because of his insurance going up, because of his insurance going up, because of his insurance going up. That was a comment that he made. As I said, several months ago, there was a group of people that came up here. There were brokers and consultants, both, who were going to address the commission to get in to say, hey, we have ways to save the county money. Okay? You, she has the figures, I have some figures. You can figure out who it is, but it doesn't matter, it's fine. But the one group came up and said, within the first year, if they would have gotten the bid, or was able to work with Bourbon County, with their health insurance and stuff, would have saved the county $100,000 in the first year. There's your number one answer, $100,000. I'm not done yet, hold on, okay?
I want to respond.
Okay. And then after that, okay, and then after that, for the next five to seven years, based on the information, the high risk, $1.5 million. That's quite a bit of money, 1.5 million. But when that time came, to sit, to listen to everybody, to give everybody that opportunity to speak, to show or to prove that they can save the county money, like they put their words out there, you guys didn't give them that opportunity and the chance to go in front of a board. You didn't, because I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet.
I'll let Susan respond to that one.
Let me, because what had happened is that Susan came before you and said, we're, we're short on time here. We're short on time, we gotta, you know, tell me which road or which direction to go down. I mean, there's a lot of consultants and there's a lot of brokers that really want your attention, want to sit here and help the county out and the employees to save money. So she turned to you guys and said, which way do I need to go? Which road? What do I need to do? And all of you agreed, we'll go ahead and sign the same current contract for an additional three years. Didn't even give anybody a chance. At least hear them out. Right, wrong, or indifferent, at least you give them, because I can tell you right now, I'm going out on a long limb on this. $100,000 the first year, 1.5 for the next five to seven years.
They can't guarantee that.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that.
It was a presentation, it was speculation.
That's BS information, what they had.
But they're putting their word in their.
They were just trying to sell a contract.
I'm just saying, but they work for an insurance company, not for you guys.
That's true, but Bill, an insurance company or any salesperson can promise anything. I had two dozen employees contact me, said, please don't change my Blue Cross, because we've got good insurance. Now, these people had a lot of empty promises with no information, because Blue Cross wouldn't give it to them. So they really didn't know what numbers they was quoting. They was quoting something to get our packet, that's all.
Like I said, but what savings has Blue Cross saved us? You never listened, Blue Cross never came up here, correct?
Correct.
All right, and let's leave it at that, you never gave, Blue Cross never came up. And to tell the county how much.
I don't know, do, do I go through this every year for insurance? I mean, every year. And I have multiple, multiple insurance companies that I get to choose from, both from my prior work and from social security, from, from my Medicare. And let me tell you what, every year, my insurance goes up, there's not one of those companies can ever save me money. I went from, from when I retired to a zero policy, to now, to a very expensive policy, just for my wife, and even myself. So you know, I could hear, I could hear all these insurance companies telling me the same thing. I hear it on TV and everything else, when you go out there, they can't send, save you anything.
And as a consumer, as anybody that's sitting here in a consumer, it's your responsibility as an individual to shop around yourself. And if you chose to keep that insurance, I believe it's time to go shop somewhere else.
Well, there's nowhere in our organization where I'm at.
Cars and everything else. But I'm just saying, you asked, but you didn't give them an opportunity to explain.
We did not, but, but if you understand the insurance, and I know you do, with no claim information, their first year's number was bogus. When they got the claim information, the second and third year, who are we gonna lay off to pay those premiums, when they're much more than Blue Cross? We don't know that, but it could be.
And then my challenge to this, because you challenged me, how we're gonna save, and then I'll revert back to you and hit the ball back into your court. Have Blue Cross and Women's Shields stand before you, before us, and say, how much money is our savings?
All right, Susan, you've got some figures that you put together over the months.
Yeah, Commissioner O'Hara asked me to go back and look at 2020 numbers, and this is on an annualized basis. So this would be not based on the base pay, would be based on their total pay. And based on the deputies, the average is, they pay, they get paid about $44,000 a year. If you include benefits, that would be closer to like $56,000. And so if you take that and divide that by 2080, which is your normal number that you use for pay, with overtime and straight time, they are right at the market average in this report. Now, what I have not been able to talk with the, the lady that came, I, I've put a call into her, she hasn't returned my call yet, is to really talk through her numbers and what is included in that number. If it's base pay, if it includes taxes, if it includes benefits, you know, all those things. We asked that question that day, and it wasn't really clarified. So I just took what we are currently paying the deputies in 2020, a COVID year, mind you, and it was about $44,000 is what the average was. So, and that's based on one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 deputies, so.
I'd also like to clear something up. I support the Sheriff Department, 100, I'm 66 years old, I've lived here my entire life. I support you guys, I really, really do, because you have a dangerous job. Most of us won't do it. And I agree, you need more money. I agree, the Public Works Department needs more money. But we're charged with a way, and, and Bill, his information on saving money on insurance, could be 100% accurate, or it could be a pipe dream. We don't know, because we didn't do it. He's right. But we will do it in the future. I've been here just a few months, and things are changing on how we're doing things, but I personally support you. But I'm not willing to go out and really increase property tax and keep businesses from coming to Fort Scott, because our taxes are too high. We've got to find that match somewhere, so, and you're right.
So those numbers Susan just provided, she, she said that was overtime rate.
No, it was overtime and straight.
Overtime, and so, we're looking at $44,000, we're working our butts off, working enormous amount of overtime hours, not because we want to, because we have to, and we have no choice. We got dope investigations that are drawn out. So, but that's what, if that's what you're saying, is what I'm thinking, those numbers is what we get paid, that $44,000, some odda dollars, is off us working twice as much. I tell you, myself and a couple of the deputies, we work probably over 100 hours pay-per, minimum. That's for this job. That don't cut it for me at home. I still gotta work two other jobs. I don't get days off, and I'm still making nothing. So if it's saying that we still have to work overtime and work two, three, you know, 40 hours a week overtime, to make it get by, that's saying something. If that's where you guys are thinking, that we need to work 40 hours overtime just to make that amount of money, there's something wrong.
No, we're not saying that whatsoever. Maybe we need to look at, at cutting the overtime and giving you raises.
I, I'd like to bring up the overtime. I keep hearing, I've heard several comments, well, we got to cut the overtime, they could, they could afford raises, they cut the overtime. Every hour of overtime that we work, a sheet is filled out. Why did you work this hour of overtime? We date it, give the explanation, write a brief narrative. How many of you three have looked at any of those sheets?
And never provided to us.
I haven't.
It has been provided to you, because we talked to you a few years ago.
Well, a few years ago, yeah, we don't, we don't get them on, we don't get them on a monthly or weekly basis.
We will get them provided to you.
Never seen them since that overtime.
Because every hour that we work, there has to be an answer for. We're not just sitting at the office, watching YouTube videos, and silly stuff like that.
What was that question, I missed it?
They've never been offered the overtime.
We don't get the, we don't get the sheets ever, ever pay-per-aided.
No, that is true, and that is true, but that also came about when former Commissioner Jeff Fisher made the public announcement in a commission meeting, reported by the newspaper, that I was padding numbers. Taddying numbers. And after that, reading the newspaper, that's when I came up, and set the overtime down on the desk and said, here's the overtime, you're more than welcome at any time to come down and look at it, it's in detail. So yes, it has been brought to former boards, but the current board that's sitting right now, except for one, was aware of it, and I still have that news clipping.
And I know where we're at, wherever, but we shouldn't have to request it. If you want us to sit, put it on the, on the time.
Okay. Can I respond to him real quick? Mr. O'Hara, you say you shouldn't have to request it. You're throwing out there that if we cut our overtime, we could afford raises. How do you make that comment?
I'm not making that comment, I'm just saying it, my comment was, my comment was, well, if you had more pay, would you cut your overtime?
We can't, that's what I'm here trying to tell you.
If you give you $11,000 raise.
There's 11 deputies here that have to get.
If we give you $11,000 raise, or your base power, salary, and you work the same hours on overtime, Alex, they're gonna calculate out too.
I think what you're gonna have to look at is, if they want to reduce overtime, they're gonna have to add people, because the work is still available. I mean, it's still there, the work's not going away. So when you add people, that, that maybe take away pay from them, because they're not gonna have the overtime. And so in order to, to get up to the amount that they're, that you're requesting, there would have to be a raise. But what the problem is, is how do we, how do we find the funds to give you that raise? That is the biggest, that is the biggest question.
With additional staffing like he's requesting, will it eliminate, when he has to go to 40 hours of training and I have to cover him? Yeah, because we're gonna have an extra deputy on shift.
Right.
It's gonna cut some overtime out that way. There's no way in law enforcement that you can eliminate overtime.
I agree with that statement.
I'm not hard on that.
But let me say, I don't want to see those sheets, because I trust Bill to look at those sheets. It's not, I don't want to look at your guys' overtime sheets.
I want you to see those sheets, because I want you to understand where we're coming from, and how hard we're working for this county.
I don't one minute think you're goofing off, so.
Because there is a silent evil that is in this community called narcotics. Nobody in this county knows, a week ago, we assisted the DEA and a strike force, task force, that's combined of several federal agencies, helped them intercept six pounds of methamphetamine that was headed to no other place but Bourbon County. We just were able, with their assistance, after hundreds of hours of surveillance, phone dumps, search warrants, gathering intel, these guys bust their butt to eliminate and keep your kids, your grandkids, in this community safe. So if you're wanting overtime eliminated, are you asking us to stop investigating narcotics?
We are not saying anything about eliminating.
Are you asking us to stop doing surveillance? I mean, what part of overtime do you want stopped?
We don't. Maybe you need to tell us how many people you need. How many, how many officers is, is the average per population for, for Bourbon County? I don't know that figure right off the top, top of my head, and, and this is on the state average, but I know we're very close to it. We may be one short of, of the average right now.
And, and so that one per shift?
No, it's one period.
You talk about, how do we eliminate overtime? So, sorry, I'm gonna.
I didn't say how to eliminate it. I said, would you, would you want to, to more, more pay versus the overtime?
Every deputy here has 120 hours of vacation allotted to them a year. Most of us don't use it. We also have 40 hours a year of training that we have to go through every year to keep our certification. We have two per shift. Every time somebody calls in sick, somebody goes to training, somebody has to go do anything, we're not like the clerks, we're not like Road and Bridge, we're not like where that, that tractor seat or that desk seat just sits empty. We have to fill that spot. If Kevin calls in sick tomorrow, I have to come work that, and that's going to be overtime. You guys, we allot 120 hours of vacation. In reality, we should be allotting 120 hours of overtime just to cover that vacation. And if we had one more person per shift, we could run with two, we've been doing it for a long time. So then, when Kevin calls in sick, we just run with two instead of three. That eliminates a lot of that overtime, but Sheriff Martin comes in all the time too, asking for manpower, and it's the same thing, over and over and over. Every year since I've been here, we've asked for manpower, have never gotten it.
Well, no, that's not true, because you've.
We've gotten it through grants, we've gotten it through grants.
No, 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 you've got, you've got two more deputies than you had, since I've been here.
Through grant position.
And now we got, you got two and probably a half more, and one was with a grant, and the grant, the grant is, the grant is over, and we opted to keep the person.
Okay. So, but we've got those through grants. You guys have never allotted us money to hire more people.
Only one of them.
We only got, we only got two grants.
Well, you do have two grants, but you got, you got a total of three more, more people, because we had a slot upstairs that we no longer had, and that was transferred to the deputies.
But that's my thing, as long as we're running with two-man shifts, there's always gonna be overtime, because we can't run with one. That's, that's suicide for us.
But that's, that's where it's a staffing, it's a staffing issue, and to eliminate overtime for you guys, then we just need to hire somebody. So I don't even think that's the conversation here. It's really about your base pay, right?
Well, it's about base pay and staff, yes.
Okay, but the staffing could, could resolve lots of things. The staffing could resolve your overtime.
So my name is Nick Trim. I've been with the sheriff's office four years. I worked with the city prior to that. This is my 2016 year in uniform. I took a 20%, I am the 57% pay raise, or pay cut, from where I was in 2016, when I retired from the military. You, when it comes down to basic safety, you're looking at the one dude who works the road, went on my shift. I have one new guy. Kevin, where you at? Raise your hand. We hired two brand-new guys at a lowest rate. I came here knowing what my pay raise was, what my pay was going to be. The only way I can is because of my 20 years' previous service, to afford it. Law enforcement is a calling, right? How many of you guys have ever had to go to a call by yourself and put your safety on the line? All of us have. I am very fortunate to know what my life is worth. How many of you guys can say that? Right? I know what my life insurance is, what I pay for, that's what my life is worth. My wife's watching this right now, right? My kids are in school, right? So I pay taxes and I do everything else, and I take that risk, right? When I hear somebody say, you know, it comes down to staffing, we need to get these people here.
You're condemning us from not wanting to be a sheriff's officer, that's your choice. We don't pay you enough money. I think we're here to argue about the money, not the, the good job that you do.
But here's the question, what are we worth? What are we worth?
What are you worth? I don't know, you said that you took a 57% cut to come, come here.
Retire out of the military. Retiring out of the military.
So, so right now, the average salary is probably right around thirty-two thousand dollars. So you're saying we probably need to be up to about sixty-four thousand dollars?
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that, but I can tell you this, that when it comes down to every day, if you wanna give us a thousand dollars a pay raise for the year, why not just give it to us in a bonus so we can actually do something with it?
We did last year.
I've been less than five years, I didn't see it.
Well, we've been on longevity.
Right? So does it, does it affect us? It affected what, three people? Three people, okay? So.
Well, I don't wanna get beat up about that.
I wanna make one more thing. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, my memory's terrible. Have you asked us to meet and talk about increasing your staff since I've been here?
Uh, I guess it's even in past budget reports that I've turned into the commission, and I always add personnel and what those positions are for.
But you haven't requested a, a meeting with us to explain to me what you want or what you need.
That's, I felt that was part of the budget hearing, and also before you became a commissioner, you even came down to the sheriff's office and talked to us about it.
Oh, yeah.
So, to answer your question, so yes, we have.
I think you all need a big pay raise. I just don't know how to do it.
Pay raise or staff?
Well, you need both.
Both.
So, so I wanna make it very clear, if you increase staff, your, your annual wage is going to go down at this, at this pay rate, at this pay.
Because of the overtime.
Because of the overtime.
Because of the overtime.
Yes. So I just wanna make that real clear. You know, we can, we can, we can solve the overtime, but solving for the pay increase is going to be a little bit more difficult without raising taxes.
So, you know, we're, we're talking somewhere around forty-five thousand dollars per person at the, the current rate to add, right around maybe fifty. So if you add three, one per shift, then you're, then you're gonna be.
If you added, let's just say you added two dollars to the base, you're, it's gonna cost you about forty-five thousand, about fif, it's gonna cost you about forty-five thousand dollars, maybe fifty thousand with taxes.
But that's not, that's not with increasing staff.
No, that's not increasing staff. That's just giving a raise to the base.
So you're saying with the minimum, you're gonna have to have at least two more, which is gonna add another hundred thousand, ninety?
Well, I would like to do this. I mean, this is gonna be an dead end road, what we're talking about today. You guys are getting frustrated, and we're getting frustrated. I would request a work session with the commission, Sue and Bill, and a couple of your representative. Let's sit down, not a commission meeting, a work session, and I wanna hear everything, and I wanna hear Sue's and tell us how we can fix it money-wise, and I wanna hear what Bill says he needs staff-wise to help with the overtime. I need more information, and let's have a work session, because us standing here today arguing, I don't know if that's the right word to use. It's not, it's not gonna go anywhere today, so. So I appreciate you guys' concern, I appreciate your problems.
I'd just like to add one more thing.
Let me say one more thing. You didn't have the right to say I didn't support you, because you don't know me.
I'm saying it doesn't feel like you support us.
Well, you can feel anything you want. It don't make it right.
And I'm entitled to feel that way just like you are.
Well, that's true, you know, and you know, I was accused, I was accused. I was accused here not too long ago of, of wanting to defund the police. I've never said that, and I would never go that direction.
I, I just have a couple of quick questions, and we'll wrap this up. Like you said, we're probably to a point where we need to end this. There's a new position coming open out of the old hospital, or whatever, whatever it's called now, what is it?
Bourbon County Health.
Bourbon County Health.
You're creating a maintenance janitor position?
We're not creating, it's already there.
It was already there.
What's that person making?
Whatever the, the resolution says.
Whatever they were paying, they were budget form paying it at mercy.
Because from my in, uh, knowledge, that person's making twenty-one dollars an hour.
I don't, I, I think it's close to that, but I thought it was nineteen, but.
Yes, nineteen ninety-two.
Twenty-one dollars an hour.
Yeah.
And I was told this was the reasoning, because they have a lot of coverage area out there.
Now, the reasoning is, is we're, we're working on bringing in a hospital, and that, that person will go to that hospital organization.
Okay, but do you, can you see, or that maybe causes a little frustration, that we're making fifteen dollars an hour, and we got a maintenance guy that you didn't have any money to give us a raise with, he's making twenty-one dollars an hour?
And that's coming out of mercy money.
Coming from mercy money. That's not Bourbon County taxpayer money.
Right. There's no tax dollars there.
And, and, and once we go down this path, say we give you a three dollar rate, hour raise, we're gonna have to do it in the other, the other high skilled positions.
You guys.
We have, we have operators out there that are making fifteen bucks an hour that could go somewhere else and make thirty bucks an hour.
Where?
In public works.
Do they wear a vest and a gun?
No, but they still do, they don't make, they don't make any difference.
I'm getting ready to end this conversation.
This is about over.
This is about overtime to pay.
This is about over to her. Okay. Can you keep asking us if it's our choice? Correct. Every single one of us chose, one hundred percent our choice to protect with the gun. Would you do it for this pay?
I wouldn't do it for fifty bucks an hour.
Well, I would do it for it all. I don't want my daughter.
So I think that's, that says something.
It does. That's not my line of work.
But as far, as far as going back to the other pay people, turnover is one of our big problems. Turnover anywhere is a big problem.
There's been very few deputies here.
And we're having, and we're having it in public works also, and it's very difficult to get somebody to come in at these wages, period, period. And your public safety is dependent on what shape the road's in. If you're running out of gravel road at eighty mile an hour, and it's been washed out, you're in trouble.
Well, I can ask one final question.
Okay. My goal as a county commissioner, we're working with Rob, which is our new Bourbon Ready, to develop more business in Bourbon County, Fort Scott, Uniontown, and increase our footprint, and everyone can make more money because people pay more taxes because of the valuation. So then we have money to spread it around. We just can't come up with a thousand dollars if we want to today. We have to grow our community or raise taxes to pay, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot more to it than just waving the wand, and you know that, but we've been here just a short time. As commissioner, I wanna make this work for our growth of our community, and increase sales tax, and do lots of things, and continue to improve our road, but you guys, there's no one here arguing with you that you've got a dangerous job. There's no one here arguing with you, you deserve more money. We just gotta figure out how to do it, and I've been here a few months, so please give us a chance.
Okay. Well, here's my final statement. Can I get all three of your words? Because your words is a bond, right? So speak the old saying. Can I get your guys' words that you're gonna get with Sheriff Martin, Sheriff Martin's gonna get with you, and as a, as a county, we're gonna, we're gonna solve this issue. We're gonna work together. We'll assist you guys in any way that you need to get us there, just like you, I expect you guys to help us get there.
And I said, I'll make that commitment, I'm.
Nothing's gonna happen overnight. I'm not asking for a snap fix.
You have my word. You have my word, I will work with Sheriff Martin, try to resolve this issue. I can't say there's a problem with the outcome, but we'll work hard together, yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
Jim, Jim and I, Jim and I've worked together years, and we've talked about this, this issue for years, about how do we, how do we get to the point where we can pay more? And it's been the same thing every year, do we raise taxes? You know, and every year we have raised taxes from, from valuations. This year, we didn't raise it as much, but, you know, we could've had another two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars on if we wanted to, but our taxpayers are in us, in our face continually about their taxes going up.
Is the county, is the county fund, or whatever it is, whatever we have to spend, is it, do we know what that number is right now?
Seven million dollars.
So there's seven million dollars right now, if we had to spend it?
Yeah, well, it's what we collect in taxes.
It's to be used for the fiscal year, correct?
That's right.
And it has to be used before December thirty-first.
Right, and it's, and it is, it is dependent on, on budgets, that's a matter to us.
One other thing, I'm gonna be, I guess it might sound rude, police sheriff, your officers, I'm not impressed, them coming up here and saying, well, that's why I wear a badge and a gun, and you don't. They don't impress me at all, and I've been around the world, I chose not to be a police officer for sure. I admire you guys, but don't come up here and pick on us that way, because I don't wanna be a sheriff. Well, but they'd get a little, they'd get a little lip. We're aware, we're aware, so.
We're highly aware of what's going on.
Thank you.
Any other questions from you guys?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I gotta use the restroom.
What's that?
I need a break.
Nah, you don't get a break.
You guys keep going without me.
All right, we're done. Thanks.
Hey, before y'all take a break, can I just say something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. All, all you guys, all you sheriff's deputies, I realize that they work really hard, and I know you're putting your life on the line for all of us, but y'all chose that, just like I told Road and Bridge. They work in the rain, the snow. I was told that by one of the commissioners a few years ago.
How many of us got rained on?
Okay, you know.
Snowed on.
I'm not arguing with you on any of that. You all deserve a lot of money. You do. But so does a lot of us inside this courthouse that also hasn't gotten raises. My deputy and I hardly ever get to take our days off because there's only two of us. You can't run my office with just two people. Maybe, I, you do, you need a lot of money. I'm not arguing with the sheriff. I'm not arguing, but you guys are not the only ones out there that need help. You, you guys are not the only ones that need a raise. Every single department in this courthouse, every single person that works for Bourbon County needs more money compared to every other county, but you guys are standing here asking them to commit to getting you guys up to speed. You guys put your life on the line, and I am so thankful for that. I love my deputies, I love the, the, I love Bourbon County, and you guys do an awesome job, but you guys stood there and made it sound like that you guys were the ones that, you know, you did put your life on the line. I don't know who's coming into our office, since nobody knows who's gonna get mad when they come into this courthouse.
Who do you call though when that happens? Us.
Yeah, we do call you guys, but that, well, we would call the police department here.
courthouse we were sitting on.
But you guys are putting it on them like it, we need you to do something for us. They need to do something for all of us.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Okay.
So you never know who comes into your office? Correct. We go to them. We don't have a choice but to run to their gun.
Right.
So that's the difference.
Right, but when you, when you first came to the sheriff's department, you knew that it, we never get raises. Everybody knew that, and everybody decided to leave. Bill, I have nothing against you, not at all, but you bring your whole department in here to talk about raises, and knowing budget time, that didn't look good. That didn't look good. How often does your sheriff, under sheriff, go out on the road when them guys are on vacation?
A lot.
A lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll even ask this, I'll even ask this. Ben does go out on the road. Ben does take calls to cover shifts. He doesn't turn in the overtime. He doesn't turn it in, because he's trying to help the community and the sheriff's department out. There's been numerous times, he could've wrote overtime and what reason, that's not. He's never done that. Very seldom does he do it, but very seldom he does do that, okay? So.
And with overtime, with overtime, how much does your guys make an hour?
What do you mean?
With all the overtime that they are forced to get, how much an hour do they wind up making?
A little over twenty bucks an hour. Exactly. But overtime's not a benefit.
Right, I know overtime's a benefit.
Quit acting like we're getting paid a ton of money through a benefit by getting overtime.
I'm not, I'm not asking.
Quit talking about it. Talk about the base pay, talk about what really matters.
You're voted, aren't you?
Yes, I am elected.
You should fucking be ashamed of yourself for being in here and even discussing this.
Why, why is that?
Okay.
Because I don't get any time off.
You're salivating, for starters, you, you not only chose, but you had to campaign for it.
Right.
Wanted to take what you got, just sit in that air-conditioned office.
Hey, can you guys take that outside so we can move on to this?
Yes, because, please, let's get this.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much.
And Ann, you have come to the sheriff's office, you have.
Yeah, I thought last night's school meeting was intense, but.
But Ann, you have come to the sheriff's office.
I know, yes, yes.
We have explained to you, explained to you, on hot mic, discussions of how to, to discuss overtime and breakdown and everything else. So you understand where we're coming from.
I do, I do, I do.
Do you agree?
Uh, it needs fixed. It's not, and again, it's not gonna get fixed overnight, but there definitely needs to be a plan going forward on what that looks like.
Well, that's county wire, too. Alrighty, here we go.
Commissioners, I, Laura Holder's executive session is actually on my time. I need to go in for that reason. I've got, actually, to help Mr. Hoyt to understand my position on this executive session, I do have, one, two, three, four matters that are all attorney-client privilege, possible litigation, there is some HR issues that we have to address with that too, that have a legal, huge legal background in them, and then of the three, of the three, the other three parts of that are actually lit, possible litigation. So I could, if you want, go in for attorney-client privilege, for turn, for the issues of attorney-client privilege with the, that with those four. I'm sorry, I'm stumbling a little bit because I'm trying to think this through, and come back out and talk to the other ones about possible litigation on a HR issue, but I really think they're all the same, and I think we learned in our training that we can combine those if we clarify what they are, so.
So we're able to, if we're able to combine them, let's get them combined, so we save time.
Sure, I'm gonna need probably, it's long for me, I'm probably gonna need twenty minutes, and.
Okay, so we got a motion?
I'll make a motion for an executive session with three commissioners.
Myself.
And county councilor Meeks, and that's it?
That's it.
Okay, and it's under KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in this, in the attorney-client relationship?
Yep, and what that is, is there's basically some incidences occurred that could lead to litigation, and then we have an employee matter that could potentially lead to litigation, and then we have.
So possible litigation.
And then we have a report that at this point would be attorney-client privilege until it's released to the public.
Here's for.
Twenty minutes.
For twenty minutes.
Add part one also.
Yeah.
Okay, and also to discuss, um, for KSA forty-seven-five forty-three nineteen B one, to discuss personal matters of individuals and non-elected personnel to protect their privacy along with, um, the, the previous KSA number that I gave. With us four, for twenty minutes, and we will return at eleven twenty-eight.
Second. Any discussion? Hall of favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I always have coffee, but it's worse. I'd rather take this mask off to a male.
What'd he tell ya?
Sid, you know some of the medicine you take hurts you of unisystem, be careful.
You haven't got a clue what I mean, so bad.
Make a motion to...
They think I do.
Make a motion to resume normal session eleven twenty-eight with action.
Second.
Any discussion? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I have Ms. Holdridge in the room. We would like to be able, I'd like a motion, basically, to, I have to, you have to tell me what to do. She's elected, you don't have to tell her what to do, or Ashley, but I am asking that you allow for me to work with Ashley and, and Ms. Holdridge to petition the commission at some future date in the near future to reopen a road. Uh, we've been working on this for about a year and a half. We did, I did talk to the Kansas Association of Counties, probably a couple, about a month ago, a month and a half. I mean, I've lost track of time. It's been probably maybe two and a half months. But our only resolution or to resolve this problem is to reopen the road. And then at some point, we would petition again to, to close it back down again. But I, I need permission as, from the commission to work with these two to get that done.
Air motion.
I make a motion to allow county councillor Meeks to work with Laura Holdridge and, uh, Ashley to petition, to, for a petition, future petition on a road closure and open or opening closure.
Thank you.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
My second motion that I'm requesting is to allow for myself to work with, um, myself, and I, I would actually, because of Jim's background with railroads, I'd ask that, uh, myself and Eric Bailey and Ms., and Mr. Harris be allowed to work on a, an issue that we have in one of our roads with a, a right-of-way from a rail line.
Make a motion.
On two separate roads.
Make a motion to allow councillor Meeks and Eric Bailey and commissioner Harris to work on a couple right-of-way areas, uh, dealing with the railroad.
That's it for, well, I do want to give a quick update with the tax sale. We have got the publications ready to go and hopefully we'll be having that started sometime this week, on Saturday or next Wednesday. So we're still projected to have a sale in October. We've had a lot of properties either sell or be redeemed. So we're doing well on our collection. Part of it's been really, really well this year. Last year, I thought we did a great job. This year, the tax sale team is doing a really good job, so.
You'll be glad when that's over.
Well, we're gonna, just for the record, we'll be gearing, we'll start right up on the second one.
I know you will.
Yeah, we're gonna probably gonna have possibly three, three different sales next year.
Really?
Just because of all the awesomeness that's happening with property selling. So we'll get things done and then we'll start. We are gonna have three next year.
Is our, still our big property up around Hidden Valley?
Oh, yeah. We got a lot of Hidden Valley properties.
A lot of properties there.
I, without, without really, you know, and I understand they can't help. But without that association doing something different, we're gonna be dealing with Hidden Valley for...
Ever.
For the next hundred years. So.
Okay.
I'll be dead before that's, that problem is solved. And hopefully, it's not tomorrow, but you know what I mean. So, yeah, I know, I know, I know. There's some people in the room that probably wouldn't be there, but that's okay. Not, not tomorrow.
Okay. All right, Justin. Susan. You don't have anything? Hey, one deal. Very good. Public comment.
I was gonna ask you to open the meeting, but you already did that.
Too bad. Too late.
Bad, bad idea.
Luckily, officials.
In the last couple of years, I've been trying to work out a mutual understanding since we have the school resource officer out of Union Town now. Copy of it. Here's a copy of it. This here is the original. For the last couple of years since we had the school resource officer, part of the agreement through the COPS grant is that we have to have a mutual of understanding in place. I provided one, typed it out, reached out to other agencies, got copies of theirs, plagiarized it, copied, pasted, cut, did everything I possibly could. Came up with this memorandum of understanding, the MOU. I presented it to the school superintendent last week. He looked at it. He forwarded on to his attorneys for the school district. They looked at it. They said it was fine, but I just needed to add one thing to it and just make sure that you're understanding which part was added to it. Would be section... What section is it? B-5J. The attorneys for the school board requested that be added. Basically, that's just Student Privacy Act under that statute. And then when I was putting this together in 2019, applying for the grant in 2020, I had left off the cost and the termination side of it. But since we were awarded the grant, I went ahead and the cost is covered under the COPS grant, under the award number for the cost and also for the termination of it. It's also part of the COPS grant under the, under the award agreement. So last night, I presented it to the school board, or Mr. Howard presented it to the school board. It was seven to zero to, to accept it. So I'm here in front of you today to have Mr. O'Hara sign it since he is the executive chairman of the county commissioners. Mr. Meeks has already looked over it and he is aware of it and he says that it's good to go. So I just need Mr. O'Hara to sign it and then I'll turn it over to the clerk to have it stamped filed and filed with the clerk's office. And then I'll need a copy of it to send to the school board.
I'll make a motion to allow Chairman O'Hara to sign this memorandum of understanding between the Bourbon County Sheriff's Department or Office and with USD 235 concerning an SRO.
Position?
Position.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So my, my name is spelled O, small a-k-r-a-h, no apostrophe.
If you just go ahead and just make the correction through that and re spell and then re spell and be fine?
Nobody can spell my last name right.
I don't think you ever show it.
Well, I think I even looked online and that's how I found it.
Maybe if I have a pen that works. There's two. Number three. You heard him work. All right. There you go. Here. Bill.
Thank you.
In regards to a comment that was made earlier that we had reached out to the Austin Peters Group, that there has been no calls or return calls back. And it just dawned on me while I was sitting there. We were actually supposed to have the meeting today with the Austin Peters Group. She couldn't make it today because she's at her daughter's wedding. And she's been gone for the last two weeks. So that's the reason why you weren't able to get a hold of anybody to go over it. And I am requesting that when Susan talks to her, that I am present and that's a conference call, so that we're all on the same page. So we don't have the in-between of this, this, so on and so forth. So I'm asking I, that we set that she works with, and I will even work with her too, to set up a time for a phone conference between Susan, I, and Deb Beth.
Hey, hey. Sorry. Did I catch your last name?
Beth, the person that did this.
Okay.
Mrs. Bancroft and me have the phone conference, set up the time and so that we're all on the same sheet, so we're not going back and forth.
Okay.
And I need hazardous pay to work with her.
You bet. Just do her job.
Is it in the budget or didn't you call the deputies back here?
Do her job.
As far as I'm concerned, you guys work it out. I don't care who's on the call.
You want us to work it out?
That's right.
I said I don't care who's on the conference call.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Neville.
Commissioners, you got any comments?
No.
You got Mr. Neville?
Well, never, yeah, David, David Neville. That's right. David, you here?
Yeah.
You need a, do you need a short executive session?
Yes, please.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
How many minutes?
Five, I think.
Five? And this is for personnel?
I'm making a motion for executive session, KSA 754319B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy related to job duty, job performance.
If one matter.
If we're talking, sorry, David, I'm prepared for this. If we're talking about a specific individual, we need to go into executive session. If this is about filling a position, then we don't, you shouldn't go into executive session.
Okay, if we're not gonna talk about the other person, we can just do another session. So you're, or do you want to talk about the other person?
Both. I wanna do both.
Okay.
Well, yeah, they have to come out then and talk about filling other positions.
Yes. That will be, that will be the results.
So my motion, as stated, for five minutes, 11, I'm gonna wait five seconds. Yeah.
Could you amend your, could you amend your motion to allow Susan also to go?
Okay, well, I haven't even said.
Okay, sorry. I was on the hallway talking to you. We need to include Susan in this executive session.
Can we include Ashley in that too?
What's that?
Yeah, we include everyone as far as I know.
Yeah, include everyone. I don't need to be in there. I'm just saying that we need to include Susan.
Okay, I would, and the three commissioners, Mr. Neville, Susan Bancroft, and Ashley. And we will return here at 11:44.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, motion carries.
Ball, vote, vote.
Yeah, you got initiated, well... All righty.
Make a motion to resume normal session. No action.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Include you?
Yeah. Need to include me into the executive session.
Okay, so the same thing?
Same thing. For the same reasons, I guess. We'll find out.
Five minutes or longer?
Five minutes or longer. Seven.
Seven.
We'll give you seven.
Well, um...
Go, actually, go two minutes.
What's that?
Go two minutes, is what my guts telling me.
You can't walk around back in two minutes.
Five, yeah. We can't walk at the fast...
We can't walk that fast.
Yeah, five.
So I make a motion to go into executive session under... The KSA 75-4319B1, to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. We'll include the three commissioners, Mr. Neville, Justin Meeks, Susan Bancroft, and Ashley. And Ashley. Uh, we will do this for five minutes. We will return here at 11:50.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Where are you at, Jim?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
My turn?
Was David... Have you done any more comments?
Did you want to comment?
Well, now, last week, one was talking about the wage issue.
What's up? It's up to Dave. Dave can make that request if he wants.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to talk to you about the wage that I'm getting personally, and then the wage of the other. I don't know if I can talk about his too. I assume I can't. I don't know.
You can talk about the rate of pay, but not the person's name. Well, actually, that's public record too. But just what the hourly rate is, you can talk about that. That needs to be talked about in our conference session.
Well, I think the current hourly rate is fourteen and a half, I believe, for me. And like, uh... There was a study done fifteen years ago by the commission that the maximum pay for myself would be, I think it was a little over fifteen dollars. So I'd like to request that I could be moved up to that after, as long as I've been here. That was fifteen years ago, so I know today that it'd be more than that, more than likely, as far as your study. But that was fifteen years ago. So...
I was looking over my study because I had that study.
And if you'd like a copy of that, I can bring it to you, but...
No, I mean, no, I mean, the recent one.
Yeah. That'd be better yet. I'm sure, but...
I'll find it. I probably filed it already. There we go. Sixteen twenty-nine is the bottom. Twenty-two thirty-one is the top.
You'd like to be where? And you're where? Yes, you can talk about your salary. We can look it up too. Where do you have today? Fourteen something?
Fourteen and a half.
With the three percent raise that you're planning on giving in January, that would bring him up to fourteen ninety-three.
Okay. You know, and then, and like I say, this one right here, we've got the new study. They told us it wasn't apples to apples. So we probably need to clarify that there.
So if I could be, you know, I guess I should say, if I could be brought up to the minimum of your current study or somewhere close, would it be better? Because like I said, that study that I'm referring to is fifteen years ago. So it's not really a fair comparison, but...
What do you guys want to do?
I think we probably need to discuss it.
Sorry, my mic was off. We've been asked by multiple people today for raises, so I, I mean, I'm not willing to give one raise without looking at all of them, so...
No, until we get this...
I mean, we...
Resolved. So we're... Our budget has a three percent raise there.
Yeah. Okay. And I appreciate what you do, David, and we will take everything in consideration, and we'll get back with you. How about that?
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time. Now, my turn?
Commissioners' comments. So we're there now.
I got an executive session on here.
Oh, you do? Where is that? I thought we did that one.
No.
We should have done that earlier. We need to amend the agenda.
I request an executive session under KSA 75-4319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy for production reasons for ten minutes.
Here, second.
Who's going?
Who's going to be?
Three commissioners and Justin.
Here, second.
Second, then.
And when are we going to be back?
Uh, twelve oh five.
Twelve oh five.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.